City Council for September 25, 2025 is hereby called to order at 4:01 PM. Not all members are here, but we will add them as they arrive. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero?
Here.
Alderwoman Garza?
Here.
Alderman Masseyacos?
Present.
Alderman Nunez?
Here.
Alderman Franco?
Here.
Alderman Seville?
Here.
Alderman Benuelos?
Here.
Alderwoman Smith?
Alderman Bug?
Here.
Alderwoman Bade?
Here.
Alderman Larson?
Here.
Alderman White? Mayor Lash is present.
Is there a motion to approve the appointment of a sergeant-at-arms for this meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Motion was made by Alderman Franco, seconded by Alderwoman Garza. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries by voice vote. If it's okay with the council, I'd like to adjust the agenda slightly and have the discussion only on the VRF item. The chief of staff will approve that, then we'll move to public comment, and then we'll move to the moratorium discussion. I just want to give a little more time for the aldermen who are not here to be in attendance for that discussion. Will the clerk please call? First of all, is there a motion to suspend the rules to consider items under new business?
So moved.
Second?
Motion was made by Alderman Nunez, Alderman Masseyacos, seconded by Alderwoman Garza. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masseyacos?
Yes.
Alderman Nunez?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Benuelos?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Larson?
Yes.
Ten yes, zero no.
This item passes. We have entered into new business. The first item that we will discuss under new business is for discussion only. If the clerk will please read agenda item 250756.
250756, an ordinance authorizing the 2025 voluntary reduction in force incentive plan.
So again, this is, we're not going to take a vote on this. This is for information so the council is aware what the administration is doing with respect to voluntary reduction in force incentive plan. This is similar to what was used the last time the city had to take this path to adjust their budget. And primarily what we're looking for tonight is consensus for us to enter into discussions with our collective bargaining units. And I'll let the chief of staff give us an update.
Good afternoon, council. Thank you, mayor. So I emailed this over today, a draft of some of just the higher level fact sheets, but I'll go over some details of that. As the mayor said, we're looking to kind of just take the next step with this. In 2011, this plan was drafted by some sort of legal team. I'm not sure if it was outside or inside council, but that being said, I don't believe it ever did come through council. But we felt, and our legal team felt, that this is something that should come through council once we have the fully developed plan. We recognize that the general fund is, you know, tens of millions of dollars deficient so far, and we're taking many different actions in order to reduce costs. One of those is offering a voluntary reduction in force plan. This plan, the staff personnel make up 69% of the general fund, if you remember from the budget presentation. We are looking to, because our staff is highly valued, makes a huge difference for the service that we provide to residents in Aurora. Many have provided, you know, decades and decades of service to our city. This all comes at a, you know, as a very difficult decision, not only to our staff, but I'm sure all of you. We need to kind of, we want to try to provide as much dignity as we can, allow people some soft landing in order, if they so choose to separate from the city due to this incentive plan. Details were outlined. We're looking at two months or eight weeks of pay, eight weeks or two months technically of insurance right now, to allow people to find other positions once they separate from the city. This is currently budgeted in the 2025 budget because we had all these positions budgeted. If the timing is right, we will, the only cost that is not budgeted that we may incur is paying out people's PTO that they have accrued over time. Now, I will say as part of the budgeting process, PTO payouts are always have to be part of that budget because anyone could leave at any time and we'd have to pay that out. So that being said, we're formalizing a plan. Really, before we can finalize it, we need to have these discussions with all our collective bargaining units, and that takes a sit-down with each to go through this, see what they want to add, and then we would come to you for a final vote on the plan, which we're hoping to do on the 14th. But I wanted to get any feedback at this point, direction, and see if there is consensus, and I appreciate any of that. Thank you.
Discussion, Alderman Franco.
So I got a question. We offer these buyouts, some people take them. Is our goal to keep those positions open, or if we're going to hire somebody in the future, wouldn't we want the experienced people to stay as opposed to bringing in new people to fill in those positions unless we truly feel that we don't need those positions? But if we're doing it for financial reasons and we get rid of experience, and we buy them out, we pay them, and then we bring in somebody probably cheaper, you know, maybe because they're brand new, who knows? But are we, are we really making any headway? But I know we certainly could lose experience because that could be a doubtful, so I just want to know the big picture, what we think in addition we may accomplish with this?
Sure. That's a great question. We, that is a possibility, but part of this plan is that we have the ability to approve any eligible candidate. So if there is something that, you know, this is highly needed, highly, certain, you know, experience level, things like that, not that all of our staff is highly needed, right, in their own roles, but finding a way to, you know, navigate that, we will be doing that. So there is that possibility, but there's also a possibility people are very close to retirement, and, and this would just push them a little, you know, might be a few months earlier than they would have already, and we would be losing them in a few months anyway. This kind of allows us to write the budget. And, you know, unfortunately, when anyone retires from the city, we're losing a whole lot of experience and knowledge, and we hope that our staff, and I think I've seen that here since I've been here, is really trying to make sure that they're training and, and cross-training people to kind of keep them up and people fill in those positions as that happens. And we've seen that with a number of people since I've been here. But the fact is, that's a possibility, but we do, there is, although you might have an eligible employee, they still have to apply and they can be accepted or denied.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions on the VRF? Alderman Barrero?
Yeah, yes. So my comment is regarding prior layoffs. So during the update on the, on the state of the budget, it was stated that several positions, employees were laid off. And so, you know, I would hope that, that does not continue until we have a full picture and this, something like this is in place, because unfortunately, those employees do not have a, have any additional benefits of, you know, being unemployed, so.
That is not necessarily accurate. Everything is on a one-by-one basis as far as those go. Yeah. So they, they may have had some additional negotiations.
But we're not, but we're not privy to that, so I'm just, in general, stating that it'd be nice if no more layoffs occurred until after all this is in place.
I don't, I think the plan is to get this all in place and offer this, so we can offer this to employees, absolutely.
Alderwoman Bade?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know we are going to negotiate, so will the employees be given a chance to discuss any pay cuts or moving to different departments or furlough as part of, I'm not talking about the retirement, people who are close to retirement, that's a different thing, just other, other people.
So each department was asked to come up with a 20% decrement list, and that was submitted last week. So part of that could be furlough, could be other things. As far as that goes, we do have a pay plan that you all did vote on that is part that we have to stick to. It would be a reduction in title to move down the pay plan, you know, that is perhaps a possibility. But I think, you know, we do not probably have the timeline to negotiate with every individual employee, but at a departmental level, that it can be a part of the conversation. We sat down today for the first time with the decrement lists with finance, so we didn't, we didn't even get through one department in the time we had. So we're going to be spending a lot more time over the next several days to go through that, and then having conversations with each department about them before we make any decisions.
So I want to just add a little element to that. If somebody volunteers to leave, what that will do will open up a position, right? So instead of going outside, if, if it was deemed that we need to keep this position, we might look at a lateral transfer instead of bringing someone new in to prevent that person. It's going to depend, each situation is going to be different, and we have no idea which employees may or may not take this voluntary option. Does that, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, and I also wanted to, Alderman Franco, ask that question, but I, I again want to reiterate, like, if we are eliminating some, sorry, if people accept the severance package and we are trying to save money here, are we also going to eliminate some of the positions as part of savings?
That is part of the decrement list process that each department has done. Yeah.
So that position will be eliminated and not just?
Correct. Refilled.
Okay. And another question I had was, if we feel comfortable after seeing the budget, based on, we are hearing that we have been saving in different departments and different places, if we feel comfortable, will the people be given a chance to reapply and will they be given preference for these jobs if people choose to?
So to, to be very honest with you about the state of our budget, I, I wish that we had most likely that opportunity, but I don't think that that is reasonable. I will say in the 2011, as written, that people could not reapply with the city within two years, that volun, that took the voluntary plan that came with that, although that doesn't, and correct me, HR, please, if I'm wrong, that doesn't preclude someone that had a non-voluntary layoff to reapply with the city.
And it'll be very nice if we can see the amount of saving that we had in 2011, if we can get estimate number and how many people were.
I think, you know, I'm not sure, I know in 2009, '10, they laid off 100 employees, but I'm not sure of the numbers. I can look back at that, and, and that is, that is honestly just off the top of my head based on conversations I've had with people that were around back then. I don't have exact, accurate figures, but I can see if we can do that for you, but also compared to 2011 to today are going to be very different because our pay plans are very different.
And so the 20% you mentioned is for public safety and critical services, too?
Say that again. So you mentioned? We've asked all departments to come up with a list. That doesn't mean there'll be 20% cuts per department. We're asking them just to come up with a list, and that's after we did the first round of cuts already. Yeah, so.
Just one last question, maybe for now. Do we have an estimate? I, I read the document, but do we have an estimate, estimated number we are expecting to save here by doing this?
You know, we would, not for this, we, we could have goals, but we have no idea until people apply what we would be saving because one person's role might save us one thing while another person's role that's been here for 20 years may save us something else. So it's very hard to say.
Let the record reflect that Alderman White has joined at 4:15 PM. Any additional questions?
Maybe later. Not for now. Thank you.
Alderman Nunez?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm looking at the eligibility bullet points. Where do employees that are on any sort of paid leave fall into this whole program?
I think that's a great question. As far as they, I would, I would imagine as long as they meet the other eligibility requirements that they can still apply.
Okay.
Yeah.
Second question, and based on the 20% question that Alderman Bade asked, how did we get to that 20% ask?
It's a recommendation from our city treasurer.
City treasurer?
Yeah.
So based on the recommendation from the city treasurer, did the city treasurer then have a rough number in mind that led to that 20% savings-wise?
So we were looking at overall, after we did the first round of cuts, we are looking at what we still have. I know she's actually, when we were looking at the decrement lists, I asked for that number. She didn't have it on hand, but I can get that to staff. I mean, there's so many things that go into this, so we know that we're looking around 30 million, but that's before any of three bargaining contracts, before the decision packages and capital improvement plans that we were looking at. So, you know, there's a rough, you know, number, but also there are times in which, for example, there are unfilled positions at the city, and although that's budgeted, if someone's not in that position for several months, we have some savings there. So we're trying to be really careful that we're taking all of those factors into consideration so we don't have to take deeper cuts than, you know, what is necessary here. So again, the 20% is just an exercise. Obviously, we hope to make it as painless as we can, but there will be some unfortunate, you know, it's just, I don't know, personally, it's a very difficult thing.
Absolutely, and, and I just ask because as we have these conversations, I'm sure it's uneasy for everyone involved, every department.
Absolutely.
And so I feel that if there was a number that was reached, I feel that all city employees deserve to at least understand how that number was achieved, so that's why I ask.
Yeah, and we will be having, on October 6th and 7th, we're doing three separate town halls for our employee with the mayor and our, and our finance team to go through some of those numbers, be able to ask questions, really walk them through that, because I absolutely agree.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I just want to add on to the 20%. As she said, it's an exercise, it's not the, it's a little more than the number that we have to get to, but also consider that each department is different in size. Some are, you know, at 20%, they're looking at $70,000, $80,000 cut, and some it's millions, depending on the size of the department. So it could impact, you know, losing one person in a small, smaller department could have a greater impact, and they might be able to save in a different manner. But it'll be, it'll be taking all that into consideration, and I think that to Alderwoman Bade's point, you know, we're going to try and do what we can in other departments first before we reach public safety. I think everybody understands that that's a, an important piece and a necessity, so we're looking at the very basics as far as what's needed versus what's nice to have as, as we make these decisions. That add a little value statement to the priorities. And just to add to Alderman Barrero, some of the exit packages have been four-week or six-week packages already, and if, if we do make any similar decisions, we've made sure that in the near term, before the VRF is approved, because we don't know if it will be approved, we don't know if it'll be signed off on by the unions, we just don't have that, we'll make sure to take that into consideration.
Because each union separately can choose to accept or deny the plan. Yeah.
Anybody? Let me get Alderman Seville and then come back.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just in comparison, and what the city went through and the administration went through during the Weisner administration, and Dan can directly address some of this as well because he was working during the Weisner administration, but, you know, during 2009 and 10/11, as was mentioned, we did have a voluntary force reduction. There were incentives given for people to resign. There was a consolidation of responsibilities with a lot of positions with people. There were layoffs ultimately. Some of the positions went to part-time, and then some of those people that chose to, to go to part-time after the city came out of that Great Recession, they were promoted again to full-time. So that's an option as well. And I'll give you an example of what we went through. Today, the Historic Preservation Division is still not up to speed to where it was prior to the Great Recession. They had a larger staff. We only have a part-time person there today, and the historic districts are reflective of that, which is a shame representing three historic districts, but the sacrifices were made all, all around, and employees in some cases were asked to do more. We understood, you know, the, the good jobs that they were doing and the responsibilities that they had. And there was also a lot of deferring of projects as well. We didn't do it one fiscal year, we did it the next or the year after, all to meet the, the, you know, the limitations that were imposed upon us by this Great Recession that we experienced. And, and I think I would agree with what you said and what Alderman Bade said, too. You know, let's look at the first responders kind of last here. I think that's important for our community and the type of level of service that they, they, the city and our constituents expect, so. Thank you.
Alderman, any, any other Alderman that haven't spoken? Alderman Franco?
So I just want to make, I'm glad you mentioned that, Mike, about the public safety. We take 20% of public safety, let's just use the police department, that's $20 million. Their budget's around 100 million. Their 100 million dollar budget is the sweet spot proportionally nationwide for other municipalities, what their police department costs based on their budgets, 19%. So that seems like a huge hit. So I'm hoping going forward, that 20% is, we have to show our values, and I think that 20% would not necessarily show our values, because I think you have, you have to value public safety over other things. So if we got to go a little bit lopsided to keep our seat, our streets safe, I hope we take that in consideration, because I don't think a cut across the board is really what the people in the city of Aurora are going to want. $20 million out of police budget, if that's 20% is a big hit. So I think going forward, I hope those numbers are flexible, they don't have to be exactly the same, because some things we have, we have to value more than others, because as I said before, government's responsibility, number one, is keeping us safe. So if we're going to say that's the same as property standards, as engineering, everything else, it's just not. So I hope going forward, we take a look at that, because I think that's pretty important.
I'll just reiterate that this was an exercise, we just gave the equal exercise to every department. That doesn't mean that we're, you're correct, the police are our largest portion of our budget in the city of Aurora. I don't like to think that one thing is more important than the other. Lots of people, you know, especially hear that and are probably hurt, and I want to say there's value in everything, but certainly clean water, safe communities, making sure that we have people responding to emergencies and health issues, all of that is of course extremely important. We want to make sure that our necessary city services and whatever else we can afford happens, but, you know, there's a lot of difficult decisions for all of us ahead.
And I'll just add on to that, that I am more than happy, the city is more than happy to reopen the contract negotiations because there was a very generous package during transition that went through that offered a 4% increase over the course of all four years, plus a very lucrative longevity agreement that was entered into during that contract negotiation. There's been very little interest on the union side to negotiate, but just to reiterate publicly into the council that the administration is more than willing to reopen those negotiations. Alderman White?
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize if this was brought up before, so, before I got here. So it says in the document that you hope to bring to us counsel a finalized plan by October 14th. So with that, between now and the 14th, my assumption is you would go to the unions and speak to the unions and get a consensus. First question would be, what, what would happen if there's pushback and you don't come to that agreement by that October 14th deadline? Is there, is there a reason why it's the 14th?
Because it's the next city council meeting, because we're in the fifth week, to be frank with you. But, you know, so we want to hear from the union, they're valued members of our team, right? And because we know that they can accept or not accept this, we want to get some feedback on it. We would have to do that anyway as part of this process, that's why I wanted to introduce it here, wanted to go to the unions. We're going to do what we can with their feedback, but then have a finalized plan. At that point, we're not getting them to say yes to the plan, we're just trying to hear and listen and then put what we can in the plan. We'll come back to you. Then after it's voted on, we go back to the unions and they vote whether they accept it or deny it. Because we can't, they can't vote on it unless it's a, something that you have signed off on.
Got it. Okay, so then second question is, the finalized plan would essentially look like the draft just with definite numbers, or what would that?
No, it's about, the, the draft document that I have is like 20-page document or something like that.
It's a fancy legal document.
It's a legal document.
Okay, okay.
This is a, this is a two-page summary.
Got it. Understood.
Now, these are high-level points, so you have a general idea, but it's still in draft form, legal's still working on it, so.
Got it. Thank you.
We'll, we'll make it complicated, don't worry.
Any other questions before we move to public comment? Alderwoman Bade?
What happens to the non-union positions? How will those be addressed?
So the non-union, still, they're able to take part of this plan as well. It's just that union, because we have contracts, they can choose to accept or deny the plan. If they deny the plan, then the union decides not to accept the voluntary incentive plan.
So they will be offered similar kind of?
No, because they didn't accept it.
Okay.
So, but they have the chance to, and that's why we want to go and talk to them first.
Okay.
Any other questions on this agenda? Item discussion. Alderman Barrero?
Related to this, will we be getting a, this is thanks to Alderman Franco for asking me earlier if I heard, if we, if there's a budget schedule prepared, or when will it be prepared so we can plan accordingly?
We are, to get that to you very soon, we're working on that. Chair of Finance, Alderman Masseyacos got us a sample one, so we're working on that right now to get all the finance budget meetings lined up, and then we get the budget document by the 15th of October.
Everybody's going to be very busy. Any other questions?
If I may say one more thing that is not related to this, I'm headed right after this to be on the bridge, which is a free showing, there's a great panel discussion, so filmmakers will be there out at Aurora University, so I'm putting that plug in. If you would all join us when you're done with all of this, love to see you. It's going to be, 506 tickets have been reserved over there to have a real discussion about how we end homelessness in our community. Thank you to Innovation for their work on that.
Thank you to the chief of staff, and HR has put in a tremendous amount of work, as has our legal department, and, and working on making sure within the boundaries of the law as we prepare this process. Moving to the next agenda item, public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
Yes, we do.
Would you mind reading the rules of public comment?
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the city council for up to three minutes with a maximum of 30 minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the city council shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the name of the first person to offer public comment this evening?
Ankeet Srivastava.
You have three minutes beginning now, and the red light will appear when three minutes is up.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to let me speak on this topic. Over the past five years, I've seen troubling surge in data center developments near residential neighborhoods. As a resident of Ward 10, I'm deeply concerned. Currently, two data centers operate within miles of my home, and a third is under construction. Our community has already felt the negative impact of the Cyrus 1 facility. Residents have consistently reported noise and vibration disturbances, and despite temporary mitig- temporary mitigation efforts, the problem still persists. This is not what we signed up for when we chose to live here. I've tried to understand the arrangements, arrangements these companies have with the city, particularly regarding their electricity and water usage, but much of this information is hidden behind NDAs. The promise of job creation is also misleading. These facilities require specialized construction crews, and once operational, they typically employ fewer than 25 people, most of them are not local. I urge the city to adopt a more transparent and stringent approach towards data center approvals. Currently, our zoning ordinance treats data centers like warehouses. This is a flawed comparison. Aside from their size, data centers differ significantly in their environmental footprint and infrastructure demands. On average, a single data center may consume around 500,000 gallons of water per month used usually by 200 people, and the big ones can use up to 2 terawatt-hours of electricity annually, which is 200,000 times the usage of an average home. We must stop giving this preferential treatment to the data centers. If we don't act now, we risk becoming like the Lowden County, Virginia, where, which is also called the data center alley, valley, where lax regulations have led to a dense concentration of these facilities. Residents there report chronic noise and vibration, air and water pollution, and associated health issues, including sleep disorders, anxiety, and cardiovascular problems. Property values have also declined as few want to live in the constant hum of this monolithic behemoth. So I respectfully ask the council to enforce a moratorium on the new data center construction near residential zones, revise zoning ordinances to reflect the true nature and impact of data centers, require full transparency in city agreements with data center operators, and prioritize community health, environmental sustainability, and long-term livability. And lastly, the council should include independent technical experts in data center approval meetings. Without expert scrutiny, key issues like noise mitigation and environmental impact may go unchallenged. These evaluations must happen before approvals, not after the residents are affected. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for sharing your opinions with the council. Madam Clerk, will you please read the name of the next person wishing to offer public comment?
Mavis Bates.
Welcome, Commissioner Bates, you have three minutes beginning now.
Thank you, good afternoon. My name is Mavis Bates, and I am here as the Chair of Sustainable Aurora Mayor's Advisory Board. I'm also the Chair of Sierra Club here in Kane and Kendall Counties. I am here to support the 180-day moratorium on data centers and warehouses in Aurora. Data centers are using up electricity at an alarming rate, causing rate spikes that could reach an increase of 50% or more over our current electricity bills. Some data centers use as much as electricity as 750,000 homes. They're also using huge amounts of water. We all know that our aquifer, the Cambian Otavician aquifer, is already under severe stress due to unsustainable pumping. Closer to home, data centers cause extreme air pollution when their semi-trailer-sized backup generators are turned on. These are tested about once a month, with a huge carbon dioxide plume crossing many miles of neighborhoods, contributing to poor health and to climate change. Noise and vibration are also a huge problem for surrounding neighborhoods, where residents find their quality of life destroyed by the constant thrum, thrum, thrum of air conditioners. And data centers do not produce very many jobs, sometimes as few as 25 on an ongoing basis. I applaud the moratorium. I am proud that Aurora will be a leader in sustainable data center hosting. Aurora may eventually benefit from data centers, sharing the responsibility to provide safe and efficient computing power for all of us. Let's just take a while to make sure our standards and regulations are of the highest quality, protecting the quality of life for everyone in Aurora, with common sense safeguards for Illinois ratepayers and our precious water resources. Please vote yes on the moratorium. And since I still have 45 seconds, I left this for last. One important policy for protecting Illinois consumers is called BEYANCY. Have you heard of this? Bring your own new, clean energy. So, please vote for the moratorium, and let's encourage our data centers to bring their own new, clean, renewable energy. Thanks.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please read the name of the next person wishing to offer public comment?
Karen Wong.
Welcome, Ms. Wong, you have three minutes beginning now.
Thank you. I've been here in Aurora since 1999, and I'm really grateful for this community. Both my sons grew up here, and I served on the Aurora Sustainability Board from 2015 to 2020. And it really concerns me that data centers would throw off our plans for that implementation of that plan. And I also was a by-product synergy network person for the city of Chicago from about 2005 to 2008. I helped create a by-product synergy network. We had 200 companies in our network, saved about 200,000 tons from landfills at the time I was at it, won many awards. And so for me, when I come in here today, I think "data centers, by-product synergies." So I looked it up, and I thought to myself, this is another reason to have the 180-day moratorium, to look for different options, so it is a win-win situation. There are actually some places that have by-product synergies in development. Meta claims it has a data center in Odense, Denmark, that provides hot water for 6,900 local homes. Amazon Seattle headquarters and Equinox's Toronto data center have similar projects going on. There are projects for greenhouses and fish farms. So it's not like we have to have these things be hurting our environment. We can have them helping our environment. And I really wanted to push for us to look at data centers from an opportunity to create more economic opportunity, but also maybe new by-product synergy, new businesses. So we aren't just having data centers and warehouses in the city, but we have new kinds of businesses. One of the ways we deal with climate change, that it's gonna come and hit us hard, is to start to grow our own local food. So imagine if you could have a data center providing heat to greenhouses that help us handle climate change in the years to come. So I also wanted to say something about, I think there's a solar farm going up, or that we could have going up near Blackberry Farm. And so I hope we do think more things like that, that we don't push those to the back, that we do everything we can to make our city better. I think I have 40 seconds left. So I will talk about warehouses, because I'm in Ward 5, and there's plenty of warehouses. And a couple weeks ago, we had a big flood event, sort of. And when I was trying to get out of, to go see my mother, who's in memory care in Geneva, I had to drive past the warehouses, and you could see there was more flooding there, right near each of the warehouses. So I had to kind of back up and find my way to Orchard Road. And so I do think that there's also this impact of warehouses. It's not the same as data centers, but we have environmental impacts to those warehouses as well. So I think I'm hitting my three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wong. Madam Clerk, will you please read the name of the next person wishing to offer public comment?
Laura Evans.
Welcome, Ms. Evans, you have three minutes beginning now.
Thank you. First off, I wanted to thank Alderman Bates for all of her hard work in trying to help mitigate the noise. We've been suffering for years. We've been calling her constantly, saying, "You gotta come hear this." And until the transformers blew and they went to the generators for three days, it was just, everyone's like, "That's what that noise is." It's just this unbearable noise that is just constant humming, that the chillers just constantly just go off. And we have the privilege of looking at it from our porch, sitting back and looking at the data center. So we hear it full force. We hear it in the house with the window shut. We hear it all the time. There's not, unless the wind blows the wrong way, we get a reprieve, and that's about it for the reprieve. So walls are great, the wraps are great, but it's not getting done fast enough. Because it's definitely, our summer has been basically more indoors and not enjoying the yard as much as we have. And we, I totally agree with all the other speakers, it is definitely a problem, and it needs to be looked at. And no more data centers would be great. It'd be great if we could close this one down to actually get a chance to fix everything before they could be up and running again. Because the last time they tested it, I was literally in the house with PTSD, and I'm like, I had to leave because I couldn't stand it when they were running the generators again. It's really, needs to be addressed and looked at. So we appreciate your calling this and looking at it. Until you're living it, you just don't realize. We go to other neighbors, we're like, "You don't see it until you really see it." It's, certain houses have the privilege of hearing it more than others, but it's bad. And again, the electrical, the water, all of this is just a trickle-down effect. And in 2017, when I spoke to the board when this first came up, it was like, "Don't worry about it, you'll never know we're here, we are the perfect neighbors, we're gonna help your tax base, we are everything you need, you don't need to worry about us." Until we had to worry about it, when it was three days straight. Basically, the house shaking, and you just couldn't sleep at night, it was just so bad. So we appreciate you looking into this, anything and everything you can do is really be appreciated. And like I said, if we can just get everything up to speed sooner than later would be great, because it still is loud. There's not too much of deviation yet, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Madam Clerk, will you please read the name of the next person wishing to offer public comment?
It's Aurora Anonymous.
Welcome, you have three minutes beginning now.
I'm just here as a resident. I don't have any agenda, I don't live next to a data center. I'm sorry that these folks have to put up with the hum and the inconvenience and disrupting their lives. I was on the phone this morning with ComEd. I cannot believe, I'm gonna say it very simply, I'm pissed. My ComEd bill this morning is $750, which I don't have an abundance of money to just pay ComEd. My bill changed from July to August exponentially, two to three times more per month. As of this morning, ComEd has basically told me, "Get used to the new normal." My bill for two people in our home, and we don't use that much electricity, is basically going to be $300 a month, which is astronomical and just blows my mind. Honestly, I, I'm not really here with a script. I saw, and I appreciate your transparency, I appreciate all of the information you have on Nextdoor and other social media platforms. I saw this a while ago, and I hopped in my car and I came over here because I am just dumbfounded as to how we got here. I do not blame the current new administration. It is not your fault, these data centers were already in place before you got here. You have inherited this, but please, for the love of God, I represent many other people here in the city of Aurora who did not have the time or opportunity, maybe they're at work today, to be able to come here and express their displeasure. But at some point, you're going to actually force people to move out of the area, and that's gonna impact your tax base. There's only so much of the resource pie. There's only so much drinkable water, there's only so much electricity. I don't have deep pockets like these big corporations. I can't compete with these corporations who want to dominate these resources. There's only so much to go around, and you're going to force people, the small mom-and-pop businesses, or the single household residents like myself, they're going to have to make a tough choice. We may love our community, we love and appreciate what you do for us and your hard work, I know a lot of you have other jobs and such, and this is really important that you are helping us as our leaders, but we cannot continue to go down this path. Unless I'm mistaken, I think there's already five data centers. How much does one community need? And they may have some jobs, but what is the cost-benefit ratio? You also have the direct and indirect issues with that and the benefits, and we're not benefiting in the long run. This is depleting our resources, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. If there are no more speakers, we'll move to the next agenda item under new business, Agenda Item 250731.
250731, an ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium on data center facilities and warehouses in all zoning districts.
Thank you. I'll just start by beginning just a short update of things that I've learned since we last discussed this on Tuesday. I know that Tracy has an update after the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting last night. I took a number of phone calls from potential developers and people who are interested in investing in the city of Aurora with data centers this morning, as well as some calls from organized labor. And I assured them that we are not against data centers as a whole, we just need to put guardrails around to protect our residents from noise infiltration, and looking at energy uses and ways to make sure that they're not contributing to the climate crisis, but instead are potentially being part of the solution, as one speaker mentioned. I didn't realize all the research that they had done into that, that sounds very exciting. Secondly, liaisons in Springfield let us know that the state probably will not push something in veto session, but they definitely are gonna push something with gusto in next spring in the legislative cycle. So, you know, we would be pretty much considered a leader. As the process moves forward, we want to make sure that we're working with the loss-makers that are carrying that bill in Springfield to make sure that we understand what's gonna be there, just in case we are ahead. And then the final piece, I think we adjusted this a little bit to say that if we get done before six months, if we get our ordinance done before then, then we'll go ahead and release the moratorium. So it's not trying to drag it out, it's just trying to give us time to make sure that we have the proper guardrails in place. I'll let Tracy go ahead, and then we'll move to questions from the council.
Tracy Vasek, zoning and planning director. We did present the moratorium as informational only to city council on Tuesday. Since then, we did have the public hearing for the moratorium at the Planning and Zoning Commission last night, and this item was unanimously approved. Staff is prepared today to do the presentation again if you need it, or we are here to answer any questions.
I was gonna say, you're Dana Wysocki Corporation Council. I did make some changes, just to clarify some things that were raised last night, so if you want, I can go through those. I know that they were emailed to you today, so if anyone has questions on them, I don't know if you just want me to run through the couple of changes so that you understand them. Okay. There was a change to the whereas clauses that just clarifies on what authority the city is, you know, this is the constitutional authority as a home rule, home rule unit. So that was just clarified. Under the findings of fact, I clarified what, that the Planning and Zoning Commission conducted a hearing consistent with the Illinois Municipal Code, which outlines what that hearing needs to look like, and they complied with it. And noting that the city council adopted the, if this is approved, the city council therefore be adopting the findings and recommendation of that body. The duration, as the mayor mentioned, we added a clause in there about if this process wraps up before the 180 days, we are, this council can, you know, you can always change an ordinance or amend an ordinance, you can certainly lift the moratorium by ordinance. So we added that language, just so there was clarity on it. And then in Section 6, I clarified that the moratorium will not apply. It does not affect the rights of any person or entity whose petition or zoning application has been approved by the city council. So there's some, there's a couple of applications that have been approved, they're in another phase of their development, and those have already, they already have their zoning entitlements. This would not impact those. And additionally, there are a handful that have, I think, some of the warehouses and data centers that have submitted applications as of today. And so this would not impact those that got completed applications in. If they're incomplete, that's not, we're not gonna process them, but if they are completed applications, we will process them as normal because they submitted them before the moratorium goes into effect. So Section 6 was just to clarify that language and make sure that it's clear what the moratorium applies to. So if you have any questions about that, I'm happy to answer those.
Any questions from the council, or any council member wish to go over the presentation again?
Yeah, when they apply already, and they are already okay, so, but they have to comply with their new regulations, correct?
No, so if anyone applies before this council votes, so anything received before today, or before this meeting, so before the council votes tonight, anything received before then, before the moratorium goes into effect, is gonna be processed on before the moratorium goes into effect, is going to be processed under the old zoning code, under the old rules, because they've, they submitted their application before the temporary moratorium was effective.
And to be clear on that, we don't currently have a data center category for zoning. We only have a warehouse category. So, that's the main goal of this moratorium is so we can develop a data center category. So, if, as corporate counsel indicated, there's a completed application, it'll go under the warehouse category.
Okay. Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Other questions? Alderman Seville?
I have, and I guess maybe an observation. And I'm very happy that Karen and Mavis came and spoke and reminded us about the Sustainability Service that both of you served on, and we appreciate that. So, my question is, is there a way that we can go through this process and take what we're looking at to the Sustainability Committee and ask for input? Because I think they have an expertise that many of us do not, and I'd be interested in knowing how they can assist with writing this ordinance and getting the up-to-date standards that, you know, that's currently in other communities, but maybe we can get ahead of the curve and get ahead of that and do a better job in looking at things that we're not aware of in the moment. So, that's my suggestion.
It's a good suggestion, and-
Steph was planning to do that.
I was, to the Sustainability Committee, are we going to put together an ad hoc? So, just, we are putting together an ad hoc committee to work on the stretch codes that includes contractors and developers. There's some that Allison has already talked to that are favorable to being at the cutting edge. It would be something similar unless you're already working on. I'll let you go ahead and speak, one or both of you. I know that there's an interest in doing what the alderman has suggested, to bring the subject matter experts together.
I don't know if we are doing an ad hoc, but we definitely can bring it to the sustainability or ask the sustainability to give recommendations.
That'd be great. I think that would be a well worthwhile exercise.
If you don't mind, Allison Lindberg, Director of Sustainability, I'll also just mention, so in 90 days, we will be giving another presentation to council as an update, and I would hope that we'll also have had some feedback from the Sustainability Board and others to include as part of that update.
Okay, good. Thank you. Alderwoman, babe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank Ms. Evans, Mr. Evans, Mr. Shavastha, and all the other residents who've been very vocal, and they have been giving different feedback on the current data centers and the issues that they are facing. And some of them have provided different type of informations, which I am very happy to share later after this meeting, on how some of the data centers are handling these issues in other parts of the country, some creative ways. And also, I want to commend the staff again. Mr. Gurley and Ms. Vasic, you've been very instrumental, and sorry about all the complaints at different hours. And I also want to thank Mr. Leo, who's been, I mean, I don't know if he will take it as a good thing or a bad thing. He's been suffering, and he constantly texts about the issues he's facing. So, with all these things in mind, we want to be very diligent, and our staff will be able to handle or create a stronger guideline, so none of our residents have to go through what they're facing now. So, just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Franco?
So, have we, you know, I've done a little research since we've done this last Tuesday, and it seems there's a lot of, I'll call them green type of data centers, people that are doing a lot with sustainability, so that's out there. So, you know, the moratorium, I believe in moratoriums, as Mike said, we've done it before. I think the last time was Tattoo Parlors. But I don't know that we have enough information to do a moratorium. If I had to say today what I would like to, what I would personally like to do is stop them in their neighborhoods. That's a given, you know, until we find out more. But it seems there's a lot of good purposes for data centers. So, and I'd like to hear a little bit more from that community, and I would hope that we would do a little collaboration with them because I would think that if they're doing that themselves already, and they could bring something to the table that maybe we haven't thought of and we can collaborate, not only does it probably a better product, because, you know, we're going to vet it out, but then we send a message to that community and to the whole business community that we're willing to work with them because whether we like it or not, our reputation for bringing in business to Aurora right now is not very good. So, if we could ever, we could kill two birds with one stone, maybe we could get a better product and show the collaboration effort to make the best product we can because I think they're out there doing this. I think they all know that this is something they need to do going forward. So, I would almost like to piggyback that a little bit. And I think before, I would be supportive of moratorium, except for the, in the residential areas, and I don't know how we separate that, that I think I'd like to get more information because I don't think a moratorium is bad, but if they're doing a good job anyway, let's bring them in and listen, let's listen to what they have to say about. And then we can say, hey, you know what? We do need a moratorium because I didn't hear what I wanted to hear. So, I just want to be cautious that we don't jump the gun a little bit on that.
Yeah, and I think that's something that Steph is definitely going to be communicating with some of the data centers that we already have in the city because obviously, they're more experts than we are at it. So, I think that we will want to collaborate with them, and we will want to make sure that, you know, we are working with them and not, you know, again, this moratorium is not to curb development of data centers. It is just to make sure that we do have policies in place to make them, the regulations make sense. So, I just want to, you know, just, you know, but I totally agree with you. I think that we will be having those discussions with the data centers also.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, thank you, Alderman Franco. I also just want to mention, as Tracy was saying, we just don't know how good some of these data centers are, and it may be that we find out we have some that are doing some really amazing things. We would like to highlight that as well. So, yes, I think our intentions are to learn more, to understand, you know, what is the minimum standard we want to put in place, but then how do we highlight those that are doing really good? And we want to encourage that kind of development to come here to Aurora.
Yeah, and just to be clear, I mean, whether we call it a working group or whatever, we definitely want people from industry on there, and the two people that have reached out to me are very aware about the energy demands and wanting to move in that direction. So, that's the kind of people that we want to track, the kind of people we want on that committee. And as we just had a discussion about our finances, I'm acutely aware that we need the EAV that, and utility taxes that they'll bring. Alderman Nunez?
I've noticed in the presentation, there is very little mention of warehouses in general. A lot of it is data centers, and again, for those that live near data centers, I feel for the conditions you're going through right now, and I couldn't imagine going through that. But with the warehouse piece of it, do we necessarily need the warehouses clumped in with these data centers? So, if we do, can you elaborate why?
I mean, so, thank you. So, the reason we have to do that is because we don't have a definition that separates a data center. And so, the only way that we can actually make sure that we stop the development for just this period of time while we do this research is that we have to do it for all of the warehouses. And we could just, there is just literally no definition of what a data center is.
Just old language that hasn't been updated.
Well, because they're coming in now under a warehouse application, and it turns out we also were threatened with a lawsuit years ago for having this warehouse process of bringing them in. So, we have to pause the warehouses as well as the data center. Does that make sense?
It does. It does. And another question I have is, what year did we have our first data center up and running here in Aurora?
It was, it was, I believe, around 2017, but don't quote me on that.
But roughly seven, eight years ago, give or take.
Yes.
Roughly.
It might, yeah, it would have been Cyrus One would have been the first one. And it might have, it's somewhere around there.
And in those eight years, we have never done any sort of study or analysis from environmental quality of life or a financial impact?
I mean, we kind of knew about what the financial impact was. As for the quality of life, we weren't getting any complaints, so we didn't really have any reason to do a quality of life, you know, research or anything like that. The more and more that we're getting into it, we're realizing that there is some other impacts, especially on, you know, like the electric usage and stuff like that. So, that is, I think, why we are now taking, you know, taking a look at everything.
And the increased applications, it's not just, it's not just Aurora that's receiving increases, just AI, cloud storage. And I believe that the data center for CME probably predates 2017, if I recall.
I can't remember offhand, but it was, it's been a while. It's been at least more, it's been more than 10 years. So, maybe it's closer to 2012.
Alderman Seville might have the answer. Not putting you on the spot, you might have a better question.
I'm actually the one that did it, and I can't remember, so that's pretty bad.
I think you're pretty close. That's fine. But that wasn't what I was going to say. I just want to inform the council that the BZ and E Committee held an item of discussion, I should say, we didn't hold it, and we made a favorable recommendation yesterday for a new data center. And this is on the north side of I-88 in the Ola Road there. And what was interesting and why I'm speaking about it, because you're going to get to hear it the next committee hall, is because they are limiting the amount of water uses that they need, which was music to, I think, most of our ears. And they have proprietary, I don't know if you want to call it, machinery that they use to be able to limit the amount of water usage. And I think if there's a way for us to incorporate that and consider that and cut down the concerns that we have with our water, I think that's something for us to consider. And right now, it was three items, and two of them are resolutions, and we will not have the ability to listen to the presentation unless they're appealed prior to 5:00 p.m. Wednesday. So, somebody, and Alderman may want to consider that so we can actually bring it up for discussion at the next committee hall and City Council meeting. But we did like the presentation of what we heard yesterday. And you may want to address more about this proprietary software than I at this company, Tracy.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I just can tell you that they do have, they have their own chillers that they use that are less noisy than the other ones that are out on the market. So, I think that they are trying to be a good neighbor and to do the right thing, so.
Were you suggesting additional guardrails around that agenda item? You said it was held?
No, it wasn't held. We held the committee meeting. It was, we gave them an affirmative vote, but we will not, as a council, be able to hear it because the way the ordinance is written, we're in the fifth Tuesday. So, it doesn't go to the committee hall first, and then the ability the next day for an alderman to appeal it if they want to go to City Council. So, that's going to have to be done by 5:00 p.m. Wednesday, or the council will lose an opportunity to have the presentation, listen to it, and then vote separately on it.
So, you guys will hear the presentation if you want it as a committee of the hall on the 7th. However, it would be approved already. So, it will, they won't be able to, you, the whole council will not be able to vote on it.
Correct. Thank you.
Any questions, additional questions on the moratorium? Alderman Bug?
Yeah, thank you. First of all, our council mentioned that we had additional applications come in. So, how many applications do we have in presently before we consider this moratorium?
So, before I left to come here, there was three that were in.
Okay, three that were in. Okay. And we know there were three or four others that are looking to build a data center here.
So, those three or four others were, the only one that I know, there's one more that we've happened in talks with. Other than that, the two that we happened in talks with, they submitted today. There was also a warehouse that submitted today and another one that I believe is going to submit before 5:00 p.m. And maybe two. There might be one or two.
It's 5:06. Anyway.
They might have submitted before, when I was here.
Right. Maybe we shouldn't, maybe we should have had this item first instead of second. Anyway, yeah, I think, you know, things get in social media and get in the news. I think we're looking at this a little bit wrong. The moratorium is so that we have time to change our ordinance, which does not meet the proper buildings and building of data centers and warehouses on our books. So, it's not really a moratorium on those facilities per se. It's just that what is on our books under the ordinance does not meet with what is coming to us in these applications. So, we have to change our ordinance. It is fantastic that some data centers, and we'll skip the warehouses for now, but the data centers are doing innovative things, and we can learn from them. But if we don't have minimum standards, and we're calling it data center or warehouse, and we know they're not, we definitely have to take the time and change that immediately so that all of those new applications, when they come in, we have standards set. We have very, at least, basic things, and then we can look at other innovative things that these companies will show us, and we can speak from, really from a land of knowledge and go forward. So, it's unfortunate that our ordinance currently calls a data center a warehouse. We all know, the residents who are 10 Ward 1 know that they are not just another warehouse. So, yeah, that's, you know, basically the reason we need to put this through so we can change our ordinance in a timely fashion.
Are you calling the question? No, Alderwoman babe?
Just one last thing. In that case, I'll leave my mic on if he calls the question. Have we analyzed the financial impact because of the moratorium? Like, six months, we are pausing the process. So, have we analyzed, is it going to be major impact or just minimal? It takes that much time to get approved anyway?
I don't think there's any way to analyze the financial impact, not knowing what's coming in or what's not coming in. And there's no obligation, even the three that we have received, there's no obligation of the council to approve those.
Just because of the interest we are seeing?
And I want to just add that Alderman Nunez asked a similar question about the utility income, that revenue that this might generate. And we were trying to get the information. We just couldn't turn it around fast enough. But I don't know that there's any way to really assess what the financial impact will be. And I think ultimately, those in the developing data center business are going to appreciate that we have a process. It's going to make it a lot less likely to go to court should there be a question if we have an actual data center process. So, that's one way we're reducing the potential financial impact on the city. But I'm not sure if there's any other question you might have about, you know, how would you measure financial impact outside of looking at the potential revenue?
I was thinking, just because there are so many people interested in having a data center or warehouse, because warehouse will also be going through the same moratorium for six months. So, are we throwing some businesses away just because now they have to wait for six months?
I don't know that we even have any warehouse applications open.
We did receive one today, and I think there might have been one more that may have came in this afternoon, but I'm not sure about that. But there definitely was one that came in.
And then after six months, or maybe a little bit less time, if we have applications that we are accepting through this time in these six months, and maybe we have limited options, limited space, will they still be given preference after six months because they've applied during this time?
I think, I think the challenge, if somebody expresses an interest, is, one, we want to measure- want to measure if they're going to meet the standards that we want to see, so we're picking the best of those applications that come forward. That's one thing that I think we need to look at.
Just because this meeting was like, I don't think people got enough notice about applying in advance and taking advantage of this before the moratorium is in place. So that's why I asked, like, if they will be given any priority.
Can, if I can add two pieces there. So, so just so you're aware, we did have a hearing last night, and the hearing was noticed, I don't, it had to be 15 days in advance, but I think it was, I can't remember the date that the notice went out.
It was 15 days.
It was 15 days, okay. I couldn't remember the date it actually went out. But there was notice about the moratorium, you know, 15 days before the hearing, right? That was legally required. So that did occur. Additionally, the ordinance as drafted has two places where people who are still interested in applying for business and may be impacted by the moratorium can still apply for permits or zoning relief. So Section, so I want to get the section numbers right. So Section 7 has a conditional processing for new applications. This is if someone wants to come in and apply, because they are on a tight timeline. They're taking a bit of a risk because they're agreeing that they will comply with whatever new regulations will be adopted once the moratorium is lifted. But if they want their application processed by staff so that they don't lose development time, and they're willing to, you know, maybe the Plan Commission has gone through the text amendments, and so they think that it's a good bet that, you know, the city council will approve it or something. So they can make that determination themselves. But Section 7 allows a conditional processing of those applications. And then Section 8 has a hardship appeals process. So if there is someone, you know, some property owner or, you know, individual or entity that does have, you know, they've made investment in their plans or wherever they are in the process, because obviously, building a big building has a lot of steps. And they're, they've made, you know, certain investment into their property and into the building, and they just haven't been able to meet the deadline, then they can go through the hardship process that's set up in Section 8, and that provides them with, with an opportunity to file a request for relief. It is then heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission. It, they have to do certain findings of fact, which are outlined in the ordinance, show an economic hardship, show that they made substantial investment, show that it would have been allowed under the old code. And then the city council can decide whether or not they've met those requirements after the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission, just like you would for any other zoning relief. So there, the ordinance contemplates that there may be people, there may be people that are caught off guard by this or may not have been able to apply in time. And it does provide a mechanism for them to seek some relief if that is the case.
Thank you. Thank you for answering all the questions. And when I meant not enough notice was because we are voting today.
I understand.
It's not for the public hearing. It was like, we were supposed to have this meeting on October 7.
Understood.
But if you're voting it today, it's final and done. So that was just a correction from my side. Thank you.
No problem.
Alderman Barrero?
Yes, I had a lot of questions and comments, but now I don't, thanks to all the discussion and information presented. But I do have one thing, and that is the, since we're putting the warehouses on pause as well, can we look at that? You know, see that, can be, can there be any improvements for warehouse zoning requirements? You know, that might be worth looking at, since it's on pause anyway.
One thing, if there's anything that you are interested in seeing, I would say absolutely. Naperville, about two years ago, was right when I was coming on to council, had adopted a more stringent warehouse requirement. I think it warrants looking at that. So if you're asking for sort of a discussion, or if you have some specific ideas, it might be good to bring that before BZ and E and just have a discussion on it. And if there's anything you want staff to do to prepare for that discussion, I'm very open to it. I think that's a good idea to look at both, since we've got them both paused. Anybody have any other thoughts on that? We can take that offline and try and get that incorporated. I think it's a good idea.
Let me ask a general question to council. I'm just thinking outside the box. I don't have any warehouses per se in my ward.
Not yet.
I don't anticipate any warehouses in my ward. Too busy with single-family residential. But as we go through the ordinances and we craft, I mean, we're separating, so if we craft the warehouse ordinance, can we bring that back immediately?
Yes.
And, okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to kind of put it out there.
Yeah. So it does require a text amendment through, and, you know, through zoning text amendments, there's a, there's a process for that. So there are, it's not an overnight thing, but, yeah, we can't do it by the next city council meeting. But there's certainly, you know, if there's an interest in fixing the definitions section first so that we can lift the moratorium on the warehouse applications and zoning relief, that can certainly be, you know, they can be on two separate tracks, I guess, depending on what, Alderman, you know, what other changes you want to see to warehouses. So that, I guess that would depend on whether or not you wanted them on separate tracks or not. But from a, from a legal perspective, that's certainly easy enough to do.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the council? Are we ready to vote? There being no further questions from the council, I'll ask the clerk to please. First, I'll ask for a motion to-
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Mesiacos, seconded by Alderman Larson on ordinances establishing temporary moratorium on data center facilities and warehouses in all zoning districts. Are there any other questions regarding this ordinance for the vote? There being none, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Mesiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Nunez?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
No.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Benuellos?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Larson?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Ten yes, one no.
Motion carries. This ordinance is adopted. There's no need for closed session.
Motion adjourned.
Really quick before making a motion, Chief of Staff's already made an invitation to everybody to attend the beyond-the-bridge screening at Aurora University. That's at 6:00 PM. Motion to adjourn? 5:30. Sorry, it says 6 o'clock in my notes.
So moved.
I don't have that. Okay, a motion, a motion to adjourn was made by Alderman Franco, seconded by Alderman Mesiacos. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned at 5:20 PM on September 25.